Good evening, everyone. I am going to call the regular council public hearing meeting to order. And I would like a motion to vary the agenda, please, to bring forward one corporate report after we do the minutes, and that is R 50. Thank you. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Adoption of minutes.
Move the minutes of special regular March 23.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move council and committee minutes, March 23.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move the minutes be adopted for land use, March 23.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move minutes be received, Finance Committee, March 23.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And move recommendations be adopted.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move the minutes for public hearing, March 23.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. And...
Move the recommendations on R 50.
Second.
Thank you. That is our substance use awareness week, which I will be proclaiming later on this evening, but this is a report on the corporate work that will be going on both here and within the community during that week. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Moving on to the public hearing, first delegation, Madam Clerk.
Madam Mayor, you had asked that R 050 corporate report be brought forward. That was R 050 that we just approved, Madam Clerk.
Okay. So the first delegation is zoning amendment bylaw 18426. The civic address is a portion of 834 through 168th Street. The applicant is 1024288 B.C., Limited. The applicant is seeking to rezone the portion of the property from single-family residential to single-family residential 12. Applicant is proposing to subdivide the entire property into six family lots, two RF 12 lots and four RF lots. I have no one signed up to speak to this bylaw. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this bylaw, number one, on the agenda? First call, second call, third and final call, next bylaw, Madam Clerk. Here's official community plan amendment bylaw 18431 and zoning amendment bylaw 18432. The address is 8158 King George Boulevard. The applicants are Victor, Cornell and Alvin Dubkowski. The applicant is seeking to redesignate the property from urban to multiple residential and conservation and recreation and rezone from one acre residential to comprehensive development. The applicant is proposing the development of a 77-unit apartment building and 164 townhouse units. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought to reduce the number of parking stalls from 125 to 110 stalls on proposed lot 1, from 70 to 66 stalls on proposed lot 2. I have no one signed up to speak to this bylaw. I have four people wishing not to speak that are opposed to the bylaw. I will ask for anyone wishing to speak to this bylaw, first call.
Good evening. Deb Jack, Surrey Environmental Partners, 7680 143th Street. I should first tell you that I did participate in one of the open houses to discuss some of this. I really appreciate the information that's in that report with regards to biodiversity conservation strategy. It was a thorough reference. I was a bit confused, however, in some of the report where, for example, it said that there were going to be some healthy stands of trees and yet there are only seven trees that are going to be retained. I see that the Department of Fisheries and Oceans have approved the removal, close down, move over of the Hunt Creek, actually it's called Hunt Brook, which is part and parcel of the entire Serpentine River system. Somewhat confused with regards to the numbers in the report. At one point, under the, they talk about those trees that are in the riparian area, 104 of them are cited, however, in the report it says 104, 104 will be removed and 104 will be retained.
Got some clarification. Who could speak to that matter, Madam or Mr. Planner? Mr. Planner?
Madam Mayor, there are a cluster of trees on the site here that will be preserved as the, where the, the seven trees that is to be preserved on site. At the same time, the applicant is also dedicating the riparian area to the city and keep that as open space. They have not done a very precise number of, number of trees. The estimate is there's going to be 104 trees in that area that has to be preserved.
What is the percentage of that site coverage relative to the application?
The site is about nine acres and they're dedicating over two acres.
Two, oh, I see it here, 2.26. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
And the number that's in the table is 104, approximate number of trees. So there's, there's a typo there to indicate that 104 will be removed, but actually they are the trees that is to be kept in the riparian area.
Thank you for the clarification, okay?
No objection whatsoever to the fact that over two acres are going to be conserved and consigned to the city and assume that it's going to be part and parcel of the Bear Creek Park complex. That was basically the confusion, in addition to which I was wondering about the replacement trees. There are going to be 327 deciduous and only 11 conifers. And wondered, considering that there's going to be a loss of 64 conifers, why they would be replacing so very few conifers in the replacement trees?
Thank you for your comments. We'll have that addressed at...
Okay.
As, as it moves forward, if it moves forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw, second on the agenda?
Yeah, Don Poverchuk, 8105138. I attended that public meeting as well and I had a lot of questions and I actually sent a letter to the construction company asking about five questions and I was told that I would be answered shortly and we never did. Well, Sam did get back to me about one of the questions, but most of them weren't answered. I was wondering about an environmental assessment, whether that was being, going to be done or is it planned to be done? What type of catchment basin was going to be going through? And specifically why the sewage had to go through the park area rather than up to King George? That wasn't answered.
Perhaps we can answer to that servicing question right now, Mr. Engineer? Why, why through the, why cited where it is as opposed to coming down the highway?
Madam Mayor, to the delegation, if you look to the eastern edge of the site, you can see there's a right-of-way with a sanitary sewer running along it currently and that's the, that's where we're tying in the sanitary sewer visiting existing system.
Thank you. Yep, thank you. Anybody else, sir?
I'd asked about Department of Fisheries and they said that they didn't have a spokesperson from the Department of Fisheries. There was nobody designated to talk about it. And I'd like to know who that is and whether I can speak to them.
Speak, I'll ask Madam, or Mr. Planner to speak to that, but my understanding is that we deal directly with the Department of Fisheries and once they advise us, it's within the parameters of what they approve, they approve it, and that's what we rely on, am I correct?
That's correct, Madam Mayor. The application was referred to the Ministry of Fisheries and through their consultants, they have agreed to endorse the proposal in terms of the preservation of the creek, the adjustment of the location of the creek and also the servicing corridor for the site.
Thank you.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you very much for your comments, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? First call, second call, third and final call. Moving on to the third bylaw on the agenda is official community plan amendment bylaw 18300 and zoning amendment bylaw 18301. The address is a portion of 1939573B Avenue. The applicant is 0942760 B.C., Limited. The applicant is seeking to redesignate the site from suburban-urban reserve to urban and rezone one acre residential to single-family residential 12. The applicant is proposing to subdivide into approximately 15 small single-family lots. I have no one signed up wishing to speak to this bylaw. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this bylaw, first call, second call, third, you, sir?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Mike Bola. I'm the president of the Cloverdale Community Association. My address is 1728664A Avenue, Surrey, B.C. With regards to this application, we only have two concerns. The first concern is to do with parking, yes, Cloverdale and its parking issues. The planning staff on page 5 of the planning report state that the developer will be able to provide three minimum off-street parking spaces. I'm assuming they're talking about two in the garage and one in the driveway. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, you said two off-street parking?
Yes.
If... Mr. Planner? Madam Planner, you guys keep confusing me and you're tag teaming here. Madam Planner?
Madam Mayor, the, the bylaw requires two off-street parking spaces, but a third can be accommodated on each proposed lots.
So, Madam Mayor, what I'm asking is if the three are, where are the three going to be placed on the site? Is it going to be two in the garage and one in the driveway or is it somewhere else on the site?
Madam Planner?
Madam Mayor, perhaps the applicant will be better able to answer that because it depends on whether the garage is intended to be attached to the principal home or detached. So at this point, I'm not, I'm not sure which direction they're going.
Okay. So the purpose of the hearing is for the land use particularly, not the design of it, so we'll ask the, we'll ask the applicant?
Perfect. Just assuming that we're talking about two in the garage and the one on the driveway. This developer has notified the association that they're going to be putting secondary suites in the basements, yet the West NCP has not been finalized yet to accommodate the servicing needs for the basement suites right now. So we're, we're kind of concerned that they're saying they want to put basement suites right now and then at the, on the other hand, the, right now, what they're submitting right now is saying that they're going to, you're going to put two stories. Our overall concern is to do with the parking itself. If secondary suites are going to be permitted, a parking spot needs to be available for the tenant to park. Having cars parked in the driveway for the tenant is unrealistic. You will not be able to park any of the cars and allow your vehicles to come in and out of the garage if their tenant's parked in the back of the driveway. So we just wanted to raise this concern because I know it's not finalized yet, it's, the West NCP is not going to be finalized until at least sometime summer, fall, but we believe this is a bit premature for this to come up right now. And so we'll leave that with you to decide how you guys want to proceed with that. And the last concern with this was to do with the, I guess, perceived flaw in the planning process, the notification that we received. We received this notification back in December of 2014. The developer contacted us well before this pre-notification was even sent out to all the residents and, and the association. And we were working with this developer for at least three months and then all of a sudden this planning report got finalized before we were able to submit our, our letter to have it included in here. So some of the information you see in your planning report is not actually true because the association was consulted with, yet wasn't able to provide the comments in a timely manner because there was no diary date or deadline provided to us in this, in this notification letter. So I'm not sure if something can be done here, but I think some deadlines would be nice. That helps us kind of speed things up for, for our response time. I thought, because I was working with the developer, that this would, would still be a while away and unfortunately it didn't happen. But I have two layouts that I want to provide that the developer had worked with us after the notification was, after the planning report was finalized. So just, you, so just, just in case you guys understand that, how the developer and the association agreed with the regards to parking here. So could somebody please...
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Can it be displayed too, please? The first one, on your hand, yeah? So at the moment, at the moment right now, being that there's no secondary suite allowed in the basement, there's no basement entry home allowed right now, this is what the house would look like with the cars parked in the driveway. There's an attached garage and then there's a driveway with two car parking spots. This is pretty much a standard that don't have any secondary suites in them. On the second sheet, the second layout, this is what the developer has agreed to, which is providing that, that parking spot, that pad on the, on the right side, the way we're looking at it right now, for the secondary suite purposes by law. And this was not part of the report because, again, the report was cut off before we even got to that point. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Bola. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? Evening, Mr. Compter.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mike Compter, 7485 130th Street. Just to follow up on some of the questions that were raised with regards to the basements, at this stage, we understand that the West Clayton NCP hasn't been finalized. Our intent is to move forward on the premise of basements for these properties and should the West Clayton NCP preclude that, then we would amend the requirements for, for no basements on the property. So that, that is the intent. With regards to the proposal, and if I could just put this up on the screen, this is just a copy of the Cosmo's map. And what I'm showing on this plan, the property is the large parcel that you see in the top of the picture and the row of houses, yeah, same, same plan. So the row of houses below that is the proposal that we're proposing as well. You notice that there's, the garages are attached to the houses and then there is the parking, or driveway behind the garage that access from the lane. And you notice the street parking, it's fairly sparse, so for this type of zone, the RF 12, parking in this area has been actually not a problem. With regards to the parking, I'll just throw this plan up. So it's a very similar plan that you just saw on the screen. So the intent is, the, the lane is in the bottom of the drawing on the front, so there's two cars that are on the street parking that's just off, if you can pull it down a little bit on the overhead. Actually, they're very light, but there's two cars that are available for parking, on street parking. We have two cars in the garage at the back and three additional parking spaces in the driveway for this property. So each property will afford or provide a minimum of seven parking stalls per lot.
Can you tell me the square footage in the houses?
This is an RF 12 zone, so they're capped, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but maybe Mr. Planner can answer the question on the...
What is the cap on the lot size, Madam Planner?
Or Madam Planner, sorry.
Approximately. I, I just wanted to clarify while she's looking that up, what you said about the basements and the West Clayton servicing issue. So you're going to go forward and build, but not, you're going to build with the basement in the house?
No. What we're seeing is because the West Clayton NCP is not finalized...
Right.
If council deems no basements, then this application before it goes to fourth reading would be...
Amended to not have basements.
Or it would be, yeah, would move forward with that approval in place. So at this stage, we don't know what that conclusion will be.
So you don't know whether you're going to build a house that has a basement in it or not?
That's correct. And this, this project cannot, as far as I understand, this project cannot go to fourth reading until the West Clayton NCP is finalized anyway.
Okay.
And we understand that rumors are that this West Clayton NCP would be finalized sometime this summer.
So if you build a house without the basement, you're still going to provide how many parking spaces then?
Well, we can provide the seven parking spaces.
Still, still will provide the seven parking spaces?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I see that, Madam Clerk, thank you, that's 2,800 square feet inclusive of the garage? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Compter. Anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? First call, second call, third call and final, next bylaw, Madam Clerk? Zoning Amendment Bylaw 18428. The address is 6159 170th Street. The applicant is Ujol Dosange. The applicant is seeking to rezone the property from suburban residential and one acre residential to single-family residential and single-family residential 12. The applicant is proposing to subdivide into 17 single-family lots. I have no one signed up for this bylaw. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Thank you, sir.
Madam Mayor, Council, my name is Steve Wall. I live at 1689861A Avenue. I'm opposed to this proposition for the same reasons, basically from the previous public meeting that was held. This was originally a 20, a plan for 20 houses. It's now down to 17, but the, the concern of our neighborhood is, is not necessarily the amount of houses that are there, it's the flow of the traffic down 169th. 169th is the road that goes in front of my house and adjoins to the cul-de-sac. And what we're looking at basically is that 169th is a very narrow road. It's, according to this drawing that you have up in, it's 16.5 meters wide and 170th Avenue is 20.1 meters wide. This parcel of land has a 170th address and so basically my concern, and I know the concern of others, is that, you know, why can't we redirect this traffic to go onto 170th as opposed to 169th? When you look at the amount of houses that we have on 169th and the adjoining 161A, 61B, it's a, the house count, it's 54 houses in total. And then you add another 17 to that. If you look at the houses on 7, on 170th, basically from 61 North, it's only 17 homes. So it makes, you have a wider street, you've got an actual sidewalk there, which we don't have on 61, or on 169th, and there's like a third of the amount of houses. It makes absolutely no sense to continue to have that flow of traffic. So we went, after the last open, our last public meeting, we had an open house when there were some different options that were shown. And a lot of us gravitated towards one of the options that did actually show the traffic flow off of 170th and for some reason that's never, that hasn't come forward and we're, we're back to the same traffic flow issue with, I think it's three less houses. So it really doesn't change anything, doesn't really change the issue or the concern that we have. 169th is basically a walking road that goes directly into the Cloverdale Athletic Park.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? Is there anyone after this gentleman wishing to speak to this bylaw? Okay, you, sir, the last speaker.
I'll be quick.
Oh, over here, sorry.
My name is Paul Harris. I live at 6135169th Street. I won't worry with all the details that Steve just said. I'm Steve's neighbor, actually. I have come to the first public hearing. I went to A.J. McClellan and listened to the proposals that were presented there. None of the proposals that have come back closely or even remotely represent what's proposed today. I have the exact same concerns. All the traffic for this development will go down 169th. The street's too narrow. 170th is a much better access route. Council, Madam Mayor, this needs to be looked at because it doesn't make any sense. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Over here, I had someone wishing to speak.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Mike Bola, president of the Cloverdale Community Association. Address is 1728664A Avenue. From our last public hearing, we've worked, the association's worked with all the residents in this neighborhood as much as they could via email especially. And I also made a site visit there too, to have a look at the site. And I can say one thing here is that H.Y. Engineering, Mike Tynan and the developer have worked very, very closely with the association to resolve, I think, every problem that we raised in our letter that you have in front of you there. And after going back and forth with the emails and everything, nobody objected to the layout that we provided in those emails, sorry, in those emails. And once everything was sort of finalized at our association meeting and we had a vote that took place, I got one email back saying that there was one resident who was opposed to having the traffic going down 169th and only down 170th. They wanted down through to 170th. I'm not sure where, what happened with the communication part, but nobody had voiced their concern during our association meetings. So moving forward, majority of the issues with speed and, and housing density and parking paths, on-street parking, were resolved by the developer and the association is pleased with it, with the outcome now. If it's possible, Madam Mayor, could we pull up the, the final layout that was finalized Is it possible to turn it the other way around? So in this, this isn't the actual layout. There was an appendix two that was showing up that has the 90-degree cul-de-sac. It's actually in the planning report, one of the pages in there has the... The cul-de-sac, it was a 90-degree cul-de-sac there. The revised, there was a revised planning report that was done, which has the cul-de-sac showing different here. I'm not sure... I'll move on here. I'll, if you, yeah, if you go online, there's actually appendix two is labeled on a different layout there, but anyways, the whole point was to show here that we went from 20 houses to 17.
Yes.
We increased the additional on-street parking by changing the direction of these lots, 1 to 5 almost. As you can see, along 61B, there are lots 4 and 5, because there's, their directions have changed, it's pretty much all on-street parking there. So I think we've, we've improved the street parking issues and the association doesn't have any further objections to this and sees no reason why this application can go forward. There was two issues that planning, after our meeting, planning had changed on us after our agreement, which was to do with restricted covenants and the, I believe it was the park, the garage sizes. Earlier today, Mike Tynan and Teresa from H.Y. Engineering resolved that issue and so they will be submitting a revised building scheme to resolve that problem as well. But other than that, every request, every issue that was raised besides the road from going through to 170th was resolved.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Counselor Gill has a question. Mr. Bola?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mike, just in terms of the development to the immediate north, which is labeled with RF 12 lots, the two previous delegations' priorities coming up, I don't see any possibility... RF-12 lots, the two previous delegations' priorities coming up, I don't see any possibility of being able to modify that cul-de-sac in terms of the application that's before us to be able to reorientate those lots, to be able to have access off 170th Street. So did you have that discussion with the community?
We had email discussions, and Mr. Harris, who spoke before me, did not respond back to those emails until after everything was approved. The reason why the 170th road was not supported by the majority of the residents living in that neighborhood was because the house that had the restrictive covenant placed on it could not build or could not redevelop in the future. So majority of the residents did not support the road to go through.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? Sir?
May I come back?
No, 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 you may not, sorry. You, sir, yes, thank you.
This is the first time for me, so am I close to saying, Madam Worship, Madam?
You're supposed, yeah. Good evening, works just fine.
Okay. My name's Andreas Rundsch. I'm at 6145170th Street. I'm actually the lot right beside the proposed development. And all I want to comment is, seventeen years ago, when I bought that property, you know, I realized there was a big parcel of land there that was empty. I knew that it wasn't going to stay empty forever because this is Surrey, everybody wants to live here. So all I can say, I mean, I definitely don't oppose the development. It'd be nice to have some brand-new houses right beside us, so definitely in support of it. As far as traffic's concerned, I mean, anyone that bought in that neighborhood must know that those houses would have eventually come there, so. Whether the logistics of the traffic patterns, I mean, I'm not a specialist in that field, but seventeen years, I haven't really noticed traffic change that much in that area, so. But again, that's all I've got to say, so.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? And after this gentleman, do I have anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, if you'd like to come forward. Yes, sir?
Good evening, Madam Counsel. My name's Randy Erling, live 6140169th Street. Just a comment to the communication. I was on the original list that was sent out door-to-door, and along with some of my neighbors, it's interesting that only one person is on the email list because yet all of us put our name on there, none of us have received any emails about communication. So I see that as a pretty unfair advantage if the community association is speaking as if it's all gone through. There hasn't been any clear communication whatsoever been given. That's certainly a concern when it comes to our traffic issues that we're dealing with. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave that to the association, but I'm assuming you got the public notification from us. Madam, did you wish to speak to this bylaw?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Counsel. Teresa Roll from H.Y. Engineering, 9128152nd Street. I'm just going to go back over a bit of the history and see if I can clarify a few things for you guys. As you're aware, our proposal now includes fourteen RF lots and three RF-12 lots in the Cloverdale neighborhood. We've been working with the city staff for around seven months to address the residential and Cloverdale Community Association concerns. The original application was submitted to the city based on a 2003 concept that was approved under the application to the north, which was, is the RF-12 lots there, with one change to include a walkway, which is required for water looping purposes. With adverse public input at the public hearing in September 2014, we held a public information meeting to hear the neighbors' concerns in November 2014. Further to that public information meeting, we revised the layout to reflect the neighbors' concerns, to review options, to have 61B to connect to 170th Street. However, this didn't meet transportation's overall plan for the area. The project went back to council January 12, 2015, for reconsideration and was referred back again to work with the Cloverdale Community Association and review the density. So at that point, we held a meeting with the city and the Cloverdale Community Association President Mike Bola to address the issues as traffic, parking, and density. Upon hearing and discussing the Cloverdale Community Association's concern, the layout was revised to reflect less lots, larger lots, more on- and off-street parking, which includes parking pads and larger garages, which will be determined through the building scheme. We provided traffic calming measures, sidewalks on both sides from along 169th Street. We're actually doing sidewalks under also City Works along 169th from 61B to, I think, 60th, if that's correct. I do have a layout, if you're interested, that just shows the traffic calming ideas. Obviously, these will be determined during the detailed design of the project, but if I, you can put that up, please. So you can see down at the bottom there, 169th and 61B, we've provided for sort of a traffic calming bulge around the corner to slow the traffic. And we're also putting sidewalks along 169th, wrapping around the entire development through 61B and all the way to the public walkway that will eventually go out to 170th Street. We've provided for twelve parking stalls in the cul-de-sac and have been able to provide for approximately five parking stalls per lot. So at this point, we feel that we have worked diligently, right up to today, working out the final details with the Cloverdale Community Association to address and satisfy all the parties' requests with the current proposal, and we ask for your support. We believe this proposal is in keeping with the existing development in the neighborhood and will provide a positive contribution. Thank you very much for your time. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
I see no questions. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? Have you spoken before, sir? No?
No, I haven't. My name's Steve Moreland. I reside at 6132169th Street. First of all, I never got an email. My name was on the list. I've been at all the meetings. Seventy-one houses times two vehicles, minimum, two vehicles. It's absolutely ridiculous when you think of the kids that live on that street and the way the traffic moves as it is right now, that you guys would allow that to happen. You've got all the traffic coming down 169th from the south side of 60th right through to that park. Now you want to put sidewalks in. Sidewalks, that's fine. You're going to tear out eighteen-year-old trees. You're going to disrupt this community. 170th is the only way to go. I don't know why it's, you know, people are blind to this. You can't put that type of traffic down there. Somebody's going to get hurt and somebody's going to have to answer to it. It's ridiculous. I mean, we've been down this road, and these guys just keep coming back to the size of the lots. We don't care about the size or how many lots there is. What we care about is the flow of the traffic. And that's the bottom line. You can't put that many cars up and down that street and the people coming in to visit having to take that way. It's not just the residents. It's a big, big picture. It needs to be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? First call, second call, third and final call. Next bylaw, Madam Clerk.
Zoning Amendment Bylaw 18427 at 2190165th Avenue Street. The applicants are Parmjit and Amarje Bhopri. The applicant is seeking to rezone the property from one-acre residential to single-family residential twelve, single-family residential ten, semi-detached residential, and single-family residential nine. The applicant is proposing to subdivide into fifteen single-family small lots and four semi-detached residential lots.
I have no one signed up to speak to this bylaw. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number five on the agenda? First call, second call, third and final call. Next bylaw, Madam Clerk.
Zoning Amendment Bylaw 18424 at 1579114th Avenue. The applicant is Berryman Enterprises Incorporated. The applicant is seeking to rezone the property from one-acre residential to semi-detached residential. The applicant is proposing to subdivide into two lots accommodating one semi-detached dwelling on each lot.
I have one person signed up wishing to speak to this bylaw, and that is Mr. Cheng.
It was a mistake. I want to speak to that for now, not that for six.
Okay, so I have no one wishing to speak to this bylaw. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the bylaw? Deb?
Deb Jack, Surrey Environmental Partners, 7680143th Street. My query is, why could the three trees that are on the edge of the property along 158th not be conserved?
Someone can answer that question? One of the planners, Madam?
Could the house plan not be altered to retain it because it's a larger of the two lots?
I understand where that fourth one to the south can't be kept, seeing as how it's going to be cut off there in the corner. Are those circles, Madam Planner, representative of the safe zone for the roots? Is that the point, or why could those three not be saved?
Madam Mayor, we can certainly look at the preservation of the trees, however, with the road improvements for 158th Street as well as the building itself, the proposed building, this would be the edge of the building, so it is within the root zones.
Yeah, okay. So we'll take a look at that, but it looks like it's within the...
It seems unfortunate. You know, we, I constantly am speaking to the issue of the tree canopy, and, you know, we have lots of information increasingly that the existence of mature trees contributes to the health of the individuals who live in the area, not just on a specific property. And if it's an issue of modifying locations of sidewalks and everything else, making some kinds of arrangements, I think it's really important to consider.
Thank you. In this case, it looks like it's in relation to the house itself. I don't want it falling in. And anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? First call, second call? Sir?
Yes, I want to make a comment.
Please, come forward.
My name is Royan Berryman. I'm resident of 10463158th Street, which is north of that cornered property. And I'm also involved as an engineer for this cornered property. Would you kindly put that tree plant again?
Put up the drawing, man.
The tree plant. The concern about those trees, the bottom tree has been determined to be preserved. From the tree on the top, the middle one is absolutely date tree, according to the arborist, my arborist, my father, and city arborists have been inspected from close. Those three on the upper side, they are all decayed and they are not healthy to be preserved. And in addition, those are interfering with the line of the building. But the basic decision to remove them is because they have been determined that the roots have been, they are very old. The middle one is totally date, and these two will be also date in the future, already decayed.
Thank you for, thank you for your comments, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw number six on the agenda? First call, second call, third and final call. Next bylaw, Madam Clerk.
Zoning Amendment Bylaw 18425. The civic address is 11339 Surrey Road. The applicants are Sharonjeet and Indrajit Rutan. The applicant is seeking to rezone the property from one-acre residential to single-family residential. The applicant is proposing to subdivide into eight single-family lots.
And I have no one wishing to speak to this bylaw. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number seven on the agenda? First call, second call, third and final call. Thank you. Madam Clerk, number eight, please.
Zoning Amendment Bylaw 18429. The civic addresses are 1654016582 Parkview Place, 16591 Highway, one highway, number one highway, a portion of Parkview Place Road allowance. The applicants are Gordon Valander, Christine Martin, Diane Doring, and the city of Surrey. The applicant is seeking to rezone the site from one-acre residential to single-family residential twelve. The applicant is proposing to subdivide into sixteen single-family lots. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought to reduce the lot depth setbacks and allow a front-loaded double garage for proposed lots one and sixteen.
I have no one signed up to speak to this bylaw. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw? Deb?
If you like him a piece of popcorn. Deb Jack, Surrey Environmental Partners, 7680143th Street. In the report on this, it says that the subject proposes to remove ten shared or off-site trees and requires the owner's permission in order to do so. If that permission in writing was not obtained or is not to be obtained, they will have to adjust the site plan accordingly to ensure tree preservation. But interesting, later on, the information with regards to trees is as if that consent in writing had been obtained. So that's the first issue. The second one is, if you get written permission from somebody else with regards to shared or off-site trees, and I'm not clear on why off-site trees would have to be removed, destroyed, in order for this development to go ahead, who pays the $300 for each trees? Is it the owner of the property who has those trees on their site, or is it the presenting developer? And if it's not the person who's got the trees on their own site, then it seems to me that there's an incentive for them to agree because ultimately, if they want to develop, they don't have to pay for those trees.
We'll get some clarification for that, and my expectation is it has to do with the root bulb in terms of the shared, but we'll get some clarification from Madam Planner.
Madam Mayor, in terms of who would pay the $300, that would be something that the applicant would work out with the adjoining owner.
Thank you. And relative to the required removal on shared, my expectation is that would have to do with the same thing as the previous bylaw relative to the root bulb. Is that, would that be fair to say, or what is the response?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Well, with respect, the report doesn't indicate that. The report says, if there's not a written consent, then the site plan will have to be adjusted accordingly to ensure preservation of the trees. So it's not clear to me that there's that degree of risk with regards to the root situation. It just seems to me, Your Honor, that there's not an emphasis that the trees might be retained were there to be an agreement. It seems to me that there's to be an agreement in order to remove the trees.
There is to be an agreement in order to remove the trees, but in the absence of that agreement, my understanding, and Madam Planner, I'll ask for clarification, but my understanding is that there then would be required a site, a new layout for the site. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, that's correct. They would need the consent of the adjoining owner, and if they're unable to obtain that, then the layout needs to be revised.
Or nothing happens on that particular lot?
Yeah.
Is that clear?
Inherent conflict. Yeah, I understand. It just seems to me that there's an inherent conflict. And then there's the issue of who pays and how does that individual benefit? And this is all tied up with the next issue that is going to be before Mayor and Counsel this evening.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? First call, second call, third and final call. Next bylaw, Madam Clerk, number nine.
Zoning Amendment Bylaw 18430. The addresses are 16609-16618, 102nd Avenue, 16616, Parkview Place, and a portion of 102 Avenue road allowance. The applicants are Yushun Yang, Marcus Braun, and the City of Surrey. The applicant is seeking to rezone the site from one acre residential and single-family residential to single-family residential twelv. The applicant is proposing to subdivide into seven single-family lots. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought to reduce the lot depth and front and rear yard setbacks for proposed lots five, six, and seven.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I have two persons wishing to speak to this bylaw against. First is James Hansen. Mr. Hansen? And then Renelda Demetri. James?
Good evening. Mayor, Council, thank you for the chance to speak tonight. Borish my concerns. James Hansen is my name. I live at 16625-102 Avenue. The first concern I have is related to traffic flow on 102 Avenue. Currently is it a dead-end street. I live right at the end of that street on the north side of 102 Avenue. With this proposed change, it's going to allow for access between 102 Avenue and Parkview Place, and therefore up to 104th Avenue, which is just north of the plan shown. Pacific Academy located at the end of, on the east side of 102 Avenue, very heavy population of traffic twice a day, of course, being a school, over 1,200 students. There's a lot of traffic buildup down 168 to get to the intersection of 168 and 104. And our concern is, myself and other family members and those with children on the street, is that that's going to become a bypass route to go around Pacific Academy and go directly from 168 through the neighborhoods to 104 and bypass the light where the traffic will build up.
Can I just get a, do we have a map showing how that transportation will work? So you're, just while they're preparing that to come up on the screen again, you're concerned about rat-running. Is that sort of going through the neighborhood and up?
That's exactly right, yes. Yeah, and tied into that, my second concern is with the size of the road that the new access road will be, a road that's referred to as a half-road or a part-road. So now we've created an access, but we narrowed it right down, so there would be concern about the flow of traffic through that zone. And then also with the emergency vehicle access to that area. Hall five, which is our closest hall, I believe it's referred to as a quint, is the vehicle, the truck that's there, a very large truck. So now we have a very tight, narrow area for accessing those seven new homes that are proposed. So Pacific Academy is just off to the east of 102 Avenue, just off the photo, but you can see, you can, you'd be able to jog through Parkview Place and up into 104 Avenue.
Oh, and up to 104, got you.
Yeah. There we go.
Okay.
So the, yeah, the second concern I have around the narrow access points, I don't know what can be done. As I understand, the plan is to widen the new proposed road of 166A Street once additional property is purchased, but that's sort of an unknown timeframe. So for a, could be for a number of years, there will be a very narrow path through there, or a narrow road, which causes concern for those of us who live in that area. Those are my, what I'd like to share with you tonight.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Yes, hi. Good evening. I'm Renelda Demetri, and I live on 167th Street, 10311. And we purchased two years ago, and we're very happy with our location, and I'm rather disheartened to see some of this about to change. We have significant concerns. I have three young children, and our neighbors can attest that we're outside a lot, and we enjoy the green space. This proposed development is situated right beside the extremely busy Number 1 Highway, and we're very concerned with the known detrimental traffic pollution effects on the health of our, us residents, and especially within a 300-meter radius, which is well documented, and I've already sent some information to Council. Current residents have dense trees which provide much-needed environmental benefits that offset the pollution from the newly expanded Number 1 Highway. And this includes the reduction of noise pollution and, again, the evidence of the benefit of the trees to our health. Current plans for the Phase 1, which was just discussed, and this Phase 2 includes the destruction of 136, quote, "protected" trees, and the developer proposes to replace 53 of these, but unfortunately, my children won't benefit from any of this. The developer has also requested to eliminate 23 off-site trees with no established plans to replace them that I could see. I am new to this, but I couldn't find it in there. So I'm not sure how that is able to be allowed to happen. I have been in contact with Dr. Michael Brower, who is the professor at UBC for the Faculty of Medicine School of Population and Public Health. He has informed me of the latest information and sent me that, where there is current literature, and as he put it, "local" information that has linked traffic pollution to low birth weight, preterm births, childhood asthma, childhood respiratory and ear infections, adult chronic lung disease, hospitalization, and death from heart disease. These are not just estimates, this is already known information. He also estimates that there are 21,000 premature deaths attributable to air pollution in Canada each year, which is nine times higher than the number of deaths due to motor vehicle collisions. And this was taken from the Canadian Medical Journal Association, published December 2013. I guess I'm having a tough time understanding that, knowing that these risks are real, that we would allow for all these trees and for houses to be developed right beside this highway. Currently, the developer is planning, I'm not sure of the exact distance, it looks like about 50 meters, the Develop with Care Guidelines, which has also been done by Dr. Brower for the B.C. government and communities, states that a building should be set back to 150 meters when beside a busy road. Busy road being as defined as 15,000 vehicles per day. In February 2015, the Portman Bridge and Number 1 Highway expansion had it an average for one day in a weekday at 110,000 vehicles per day. So when the setback should be 150 meters for 15,000 cars a day, how much more should it be for 110,000 cars a day? So I have, I have looked at a lot of this research, and I won't go into details because I know I've sent it to Council. And so I understand that pre-existing homes may be situated close to a high-traffic area that's now expanded, but I find it hard to believe, knowing to allow homes to be built right beside it and destroying trees that are proven to mitigate the negative effects. This is hitting very close to home. I have three young children, and we love the trees, we love being outside, which is why we chose to purchase in this area. So I understand that there is a compromise between the needs for development and new homes, but I also do request that Council will take into consideration some of this proven information so that we can make the right choice. So I would ask that the number of homes would be reduced that are at the bottom there. You can see it is right beside the highway, and that allows for the, also the off-site trees, I'm assuming they're there as well, to be destroyed. So, yeah, as you can tell, I'm a little bit passionate about this. But yeah, I'm just speaking from the heart. So I've been losing a little bit of sleep over it, and yeah, I ask that you guys would consider this.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw number nine?
Deb Jack, Surrey Environmental Partners, 7680-143 Street. Several concerns here. One of them is the fact that in the FADAM report tree summary, it indicates that there will be six trees that will be protected. Indeed, it's only one. On the off-site trees that they want to remove, there are 11 of them cited, four of them specifically alder or cottonwood, and the rest of them, seven, just simply says others. So we have no idea what the composition there is. In reading this report, and there is no reference to either the ecosystem management study or the biodiversity conservation strategy, there is an implication that credit is being given to the developer for the retention of trees on the riparian areas. And to my recollection, the city has never agreed that a riparian area can be denuded of trees just because it's been given over to the city for riparian area protection purposes. So there's an inference in the report that indicates that that's a positive that accrues to the developer. I'm concerned here that in order for this development to occur, a portion of the city green belt is going to be allowed, and I can't find and hopelessly tried with the computer to figure it out on Cosmos, too, no success, as you can tell. Don't know where it is, don't know how much of that green belt is being taken, how much will be retained, or whatever, and I think that's an important consideration because it does not seem to be on that piece of property that has the creek between the two subject properties of this last two today.
Let's see if we can get some clarification for you from Madam Planner.
Madam Mayor, I'm not clear on the delegation's concern about a green belt. The creek which traverses over a portion of the subject site is identified here, and it also impacts the lot to the west, as Ms. Jack was saying.
Correct.
I'm not clear on her question on a green belt.
Well, it says in the report that part of the green belt is going to be removed. Now, if that darker area is the city green belt, that clearly then is the city's existing buffer, which for the earlier one, the developer's going to have to provide. So there is a city buffer there? Is that what this green belt is? It's not a walkway or anything?
That would be my expectation. Is that what? Yes, it is a green belt.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, yes, it's the land adjacent to Highway 1, which is the city land, and it is a green belt. It's not the creek area. It's the city parkland along Highway 1.
Would it help if I'd had access to the map? I wouldn't ask the question. Didn't want to make any inferences with regards to that. So that's really the issue. One is to correct that, probably a typo error in the one report on the tree summary. The other one is to mention that the off-site trees are not specified beyond alder and cottonwood, what they might be. And we've now got, and I take it, that it's just a little chunk out of the green belt so that indeed it is not a substantive removal, right there, yeah?
No, it's that triangular piece, that's the only part of the green belt that's being affected. Am I correct, Madam Planner?
Yes. And does that green belt take people to be able to go to access that crossover to the Tyne Head Park?
That is, that is my understanding. Am I correct, Madam Planner?
Madam Mayor, at this time, it's not in that location, it's along 102nd.
Okay. It's not connecting yet, but it's...
Will be.
Will be, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw number nine? Is there anyone after this gentleman? You, sir, will be the last.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Councilman, and member. Thank you for this opportunity to hear the neighborhood voice. So I have big concern about this development, because we know the freezer heights circulated by the highway, right? The busy is Number 1, and the north part is Number 17 Highway. So a lot of traffic surrounds this area. So we have, the only thing can protect us is the trees. So now the developer, they propose to initiate this serial development, meaning a lot of trees will be removed. So I want to ask the City of Surrey, so what's your position to protect this community to not only prevent us from the noise, but also from the air pollution? So because the scientific research has drawn collusion, conclusion, if the neighborhood is so close to the highly-traffic road, that will harm the people's health, that's, there is no argument about that. But this development is so close to Number 1 Road, and the people living in that area will be suffer, will be suffering from noise and also the air pollution. So I'm, my name is Hong Wei Cheng. I live in 10285-167th Street. So I just raise up this concern for your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Did I see someone else's hand up for speaking to this application? First call?
Hello, Members of Council, Sunny Standard with City West Consulting. Just in regards with the transportation comments there, I just want to note that 102 Avenue was always intended to be a through-local road as part of the original 1992 development application. This road extension was always anticipated was to provide improved connectivity and servicing to the area. We have realigned 102 Avenue with, and 166A Street to protect the existing yellow-coded stream, which is a significant source of food nutrient values to the downstream fish populations. In the future, if the residents feel that there is some kind of transportation and speed concerns there, Surrey can possibly look at the adding traffic calming measures along 102 Avenue. I'd like to add that approximately 50% of the total trees on the site are alders and cottonwoods. Within the RAR area, we are preserving 16 out of the 18 trees. Two of the trees that are being removed are hazardous.
You're preserving, I'm sorry, what, did you say 16 of the 18?
18 trees within the riparian area...
Thank you.
...are going to be retained. And that's it. If you have any questions, you can...
I see no questions. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? First call, second call, third and final call. Final bylaw of the evening, Madam Clerk, number 10.
Official Community Plan Amendment Bylaw 18423. The applicant is the City of Surrey. This amendment will incorporate minor adjustments and policy clarifications required for the use of the bylaws described in Corporate Report 2015-R049. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this bylaw? First call, second call, third and final call for bylaw number 10 on the agenda. Thank you. Moving on to committee reports, Environmental Sustainability Advisory Committee minutes.
Moving on to committee reports, Environmental Sustainability Advisory Committee minutes.
It's got them all blinking now. They're having technical...
Move that the minutes be received for the Environmental Sustainability Advisory Committee from December 17, 2014.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move minutes be received Transportation Infrastructure Committee, January 19, 2015.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
I'll move the Social Policy Advisory Committee meeting, minutes of February 4.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And I'll move the recommendations to be adopted.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And I'll move the Public Art Advisory Committee meeting, minutes of February 5, 2015.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move minutes be received for Transportation Infrastructure, February 16.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move minutes to be received, Seniors Advisory and Accessibility Committee, March 3.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move the minutes to be received for the Agriculture and Food Security Advisory Committee, minutes from March 5, 2015.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move the minutes of Surrey Heritage Advisor Commission, February 25.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move the recommendations to be adopted.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move the minutes for the Board of Variants, March 11.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Proclamations, I have three. The Organ and Tissue Donor Awareness Month, whereas there are currently 500 people in BC waiting for an organ transplant and more than 5,000 British Columbians who have received the gift of life through organ donation since 1968, and whereas organ donors and their families have selflessly demonstrated compassion and kindness by sharing the gift of life with others, now therefore be it resolved that I Linda Hepner do hereby declare April 2015 as Organ and Tissue Donation Awareness Month in the city of Surrey. Public Rail Safety Week, whereas it is in the public's interest to raise citizens' awareness on reducing avoidable accidents, injuries, and damage caused by collisions at level crossings or incidents involving trains and citizens, and whereas Operation Lifesaver works to save lives and prevent injuries in communities, including our municipality, now therefore be it resolved that I Linda Hepner do hereby declare April 27 to May 3 as Public Rail Safety Awareness Week in the city of Surrey. And finally, from a report that we received earlier this evening, Substance Use Awareness Week, whereas the week of May 24 to the 30th has been designated as Substance Use Awareness Week in Surrey, and whereas the city of Surrey wishes to heighten public awareness of substance use, awareness, and prevention by working together with substance use, awareness, and prevention groups and citizens throughout the city, and whereas the success of substance use, awareness, and prevention depends on families, neighborhoods, businesses, community organization, local law enforcement agencies, treatment and counseling agencies, all working together, now therefore be it resolved that I Linda Hepner do hereby declare May 24 through 30 as Substance Use Awareness Week in the city of Surrey. Moving on to corporate reports.
Move R0451, approval of sale of closed portion of road allowance adjacent to 10154, 10164139.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move Corporate Report R052, the 2014-2024 Federal Gas Tax Committee Works on.
Second. I just have a question of the city manager before I call the question on that report, and that is, do we have to prioritize in any way? And this does not detract from the applications that we would be making under P3 funding for, let's say, a rapid transit system or alternatively a regional water? We're okay with all of that?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. These are discretionary funds for councils to decide where to spend, and they are not related to the other projects and the other funding applications we will make. It's a portion of the gas tax funds that are allotted to each city to expand as they see fit, they wouldn't count for any...
And we don't need to prioritize them in any fashion. Okay, I'll call the question, all those... One further question. Councilor Villeneuve?
I just noticed the list of possible priorities and noticed there's nothing for culture in those lists. So if there are some opportunities that come forward for partnerships, is this list flexible?
Madam Mayor, to Councilor Villeneuve, yes, it is flexible, and we definitely will consider some in the future.
Okay, thank you.
So for instance, just following up on that, could our museum project Phase 2 fall within the parameters of that, or is that outside of the scope of what this is?
Madam Mayor, we'll verify that, but likely could be candidate.
Okay, thank you. I'll call the question on an ever-expanding list. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move Corporate Report R053, the tandem parking multi-family residential developments.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Councilor Gill?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to take this quick opportunity just to thank staff. There's a tremendous amount of work that was involved in kind of looking at the policies and bylaws as we move forward. Particularly, we've had a lot of work that we've worked with Clayton and Clayton Heights. But the TIC committee has really challenged a lot of parking issues in that particular area, so we're really pleased that the report that we're speaking of today really is setting a maximum for tandem parking at 50%, and it does permit the developers to come to council if it's on a transit network or sorts of rapid transit network to be able to permit less. So there's some really great opportunities as we move forward, and I'm really appreciative of the work that was involved in this particular report.
Thank you, and Councilor Gill, thank you for your work in this, because I know you've been a strong proponent of setting some limits relative to tandem parking and for working with both the development agencies and the homeowners on that. So thank you. I'll move the corporate report, the invitation to host the 55-plus BC Games.
Second.
Second.
And if I may, Madam Mayor, just, they're recommending it'll be in the year 2017, 2018, and 2019. And with the growth of seniors in the city and the amount of seniors that are willing and able to get out and work and help, I think that this is an absolutely perfect thing to do, and will really increase the, I think, the eyes on the city of Surrey for what we're doing for seniors and the growth in our area.
Thank you, Councilor Steele. Thank you for the work that you do with respect to seniors. My only concern about this report is the 2017 and whether or not we'll be facing shortage of volunteers, given all that we will be asking of them in 2016 when we host the World for the ISF. So let's hope we're successful in 2018, we give them a reprieve. I'll call the question on the report. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Business arising of the public hearing.
Move third on one.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On two, on the OCP, move third.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On the zoning, on two, move third.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And move that council support the issuance of a development variance permit.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On three, on the OCP, move third.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On the zoning, move third.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On four, on the zoning, move third.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On five, on the zoning.
I just want to speak to four for a moment, because we did go from 20 down to 17, and I know there was some significant concern around that 169, but I think that, given that cul-de-sac, that there was very little at this point in time that we could have done to redesignate how that was going to lay out. So it did not go unnoticed that we heard it. Bylaw five?
Move third on five, on the zoning.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On six, move third.
Second.
Madam Mayor.
Councilor Villeneuve?
I just was interested on six about the possibility of saving those trees. So I think that they, I know they mentioned that they were decayed, but I think we should have that confirmed, and if not, to look at the possibilities.
Okay, those three trees that where the roots were intersecting the property line, take a second look at that. But on the basis of land use, I'll call the question on third. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On seven, move third.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On eight, move third.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On eight, move the development variance permit.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On nine, move third.
All those in favor, opposed...
I'm opposed to that.
Opposed on nine, okay. All those in favor, okay, carried. DVP?
Move the development variance permit on nine.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed.
Opposed.
That is carried.
Move third on 10.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, 10 is carried. 11 permits.
Move the DVP on 11.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. 12?
Move the DVP on 12.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And move the DVP on 13.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 14, move the DVP.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 15, move the DVP.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 16, move the DVP.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 17, move the DVP.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. And there's a second DVP on 17.
The same number though, Madam Mayor.
Same number?
Yeah.
Yep.
So on 18, that council support issuance of DVP, 791030000.
Second.
Okay, take a second vote then. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Now 18?
Move the DVP on 19.
Second.
That's liquor primary on 19. All those in favor, opposed, carried. And final adopt... These are all final adoptions. 20, second there for 20?
I guess you have to call first.
Oh, I have to call for any persons wishing to make representation on this bylaw first. Otherwise, we're going into final. I have a first on final, I need a second.
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 All those in favor, opposed, carried. And again, this is a close and remove highway portion, Zero Avenue, between 176 and 177A. Any persons wishing to make representations on this bylaw? Call for final.
Move final.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move first on 22.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move second.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Third.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move first on 23.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move second.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Public hearing set for April 27.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
I'll move the delegation request for Dr. Jen March-Bank.
It's that time of year again, yes.
Second.
CIC?
Yes.
Okay, and MAD?
I'll move MAD Canada's presentation at CIC.
Second. All those in favor, both A and B at CIC, opposed, carried.
Move the approval of financial statements and budgets for Cloverdale Business Improvement
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move that the 2015 Partners in Carrington Galloway Research Hospital for May the 2nd. Second.
Second, thank you. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Any notices of motion? Any other business? Councilor Gill?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Over the last several months, in terms of both the TIC committee and an email that we just received last week from the president of the Cloverdale Association, there is a request from the association that we kind of relook at the fee structure as it relates to illegal suites and the fines. So what I would like to do is I'd like to make a motion, to send a motion back to staff to suggest that if they could review our current policy in context to the correspondence that we received from the Cloverdale Community Association, and perhaps bring forward some recommendations in terms of any changes that may be warranted.
Perhaps, Councilor Gill, as a friendly, could we just have a report back relative to the success of the existing... Yeah, okay, thank you. Is that a motion? So could I have a second there?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Anything else? Then?
Move adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.